Of interest in the general nature thereof. Does anyone have any disclosures to make today? Okay, hearing none. Uh, our apologies is Simon online or Simon here. Oh, Simon's here. Hi, Simon. I didn't see you. Sorry. Uh, you can come up to the podium, Simon. And and I will apologize that we're a little late. We started at five with a port management committee meeting that went on a little bit longer. We didn't finish until six thirty and we needed a couple minute break. So, uh, welcome. I know there's it's a you have a lengthy. Change to, you know, what the shareholder agreement there. Uh, we're going to try to keep it to ten minutes out of respect that there's a budget discussion and everything that we have afterwards. I think we'll receive it, uh, you know, the the delegation, you know, your presentation. And then if there's any questions around around the group, then we'll we'll let them ask the questions as we go ahead. Okay?
Okay, sounds great. Am I good to go?
You are good to go.
Okay, well, good evening and thank you, Mayor Deschamps and the council and nice to see you all staff and. So thanks for the opportunity. I'm here to talk about the unanimous shareholder agreement, which, uh, RSL, Rita St. Lawrence. We used to operate and make decisions within our organization. And so what I plan to provide within the ten minutes or less is the background, discuss some of the changes that we're updating. And the process in which we utilize to update these changes for your consideration. So just for a quick background, RSL Holdings is a twenty-five-year-old company. We have five shareholders, uh, four of which are municipal shareholders like yourselves and, uh, Ford is Ontario. And our mission is to provide stable electricity and innovative services to deliver superior value to the communities that we serve, such as Cardinal. And which, uh, is in this territory. Our main business is delivering safe, reliable power to the communities for sure. But we also have some affiliate businesses that we've historically run, so some of which are water wastewater services, billing. And customer service and that nature, uh, hot water tanks and fiber, dark fiber lines. All right, so in our corporate strategy, um, sessions and our shareholder engagement at AGMs. We've been encouraged to pursue some additional lines of business in the last few AGMs that we've had. And this is in the eye for profitability and shareholder value. All right, so and recent trends too, within our industry, there's been a lot of electrification and, um, energy transition. And so this provides a lot of opportunities for us to go look at some of these additional businesses. And, uh, in a way that per in relation to our existing business lines. So in the last couple of years, we've explored quite a few new businesses, um, two of which we've converted on successfully. So, um, in the last few AGMs, we talked about street lighting, um, in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We've, uh, probably done around forty street lighting projects, so, uh, mainly in Prescott, but also in Augusta. So some outside our service territory, um, we've also had some, uh, customer information system, uh, services that we provided for peer utility. So we had some expertise within our, uh, system when which we helped other utilities out, which we made some profitability there. But, you know, like a lot of businesses, you do explore a lot, a lot of them do not convert. And so some of the reasons why they don't convert mainly is because they don't fit in within our mission of what we want to accomplish. Uh, for profitability and for shareholder value. But also there are some that don't fit in because the original unanimous shareholder agreement scope does not encompass what we're about to pursue. Originally, it was written in a way that only the existing business lines were written in there. So anything in relation to cannot be pursued within the existing unanimous shareholder agreement. The second part of it is also speed. Sometimes when there's opportunities with small businesses, they want to exit in a timely fashion. And for us to get the five shareholders, four of which are municipal and one is Forest Ontario, to act on a business opportunity. For mergers and acquisitions, it's, uh, difficult to convert on a timely fashion in which businesses want to exit. And so for that reason, that's why we started exploring the unanimous shareholder agreement to target a change. Based on the feedback of shareholders. So when we opened it up on top of the initial purpose, there's also some cleanup items. So over the course of the history of Rita St. Lawrence, the shareholders' names have changed over time, um, including Edward Cardinal. So that's one of the additional changes, some language cleanup, some, uh, provisions that were just for the initiation of the corporation. That's no longer really applicable. So there's a bunch of cleanup items. Uh, maybe another one that is included in there that you might want to, uh, know about is that, um. The, uh, distribution companies or hydro company, that, uh, business is a regulated business. And under the, uh, regulation, under the Ontario Energy Board, we require one-third independent directors. So that's been implemented years ago, it just hasn't been reflected within the unanimous shareholder agreement. That's been also updated in this revision. All right, so the approach that we took was that, uh, RSL initiated the initial, uh, draft with the legal council for the corp- uh, corporation. Then we sent it out to the shareholder representatives for the municipal shareholders that included the C A Os. And, uh, for Forest Ontario, that was internal legal, uh, council. And so the C A Os grouped together to share the services of a legal council, got some advice and put it together. We met up in December, uh, went over all the common commonalities that we wanted to tackle. And the version that you see is, uh, the version that we've agreed to amongst Rita St. Lawrence, the board. And the shareholder representatives there, uh, among their, uh, legal council as well. And so, um, just to expand a little bit on the speed part, uh, the part that was added was. Um, to have directors be able to decide on any business acquisitions within fifty percent, fifteen percent of shareholder equity. And so shareholder equity at the last, uh, audited statements was just under six million dollars. And so that'd be mean that the board of directors could pursue anything, um, in the new USA related to the business that we run. Uh, that's under nine hundred thousand dollars, um, for, uh, cost. Okay, so, um, so the path forward is I've reviewed it with, uh, uh, Westport community of the whole. Yesterday I was at South Dundas and then today I'm with Edward's Cardinal. On Monday I meet with Forests Ontario and Prescott. And so far we've been given the green light for the version as presented, um, in your agenda package. And, uh, I'm here to answer any questions you may have with what was presented.
Uh, thank you, Simon, for the report. I'm just gonna look to staff, um, for comment first before. Before I go to counsel for any may. Answer some of the questions that that the group around the table has. If you want to go.
Okay, uh, yeah, as as part of this, uh, process, as, uh, as Simon had had mentioned. We had, uh, amongst all the the other partners, uh, we we had a separate legal review of of everything that was in here. And and went back and forth on what, uh, what we wanted in and what we wanted out. So this was what, uh, we agreed on as as kind of a group, which made sense for, uh, for all the organizations.
And, uh, so far you said Westport and South Dundas?
Yes, that's right.
And no issue, no comment?
No issue with, uh, the changes as presented, um, in the package, yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna start on the other side of the table. Uh, John, anything? You're good, Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got one question. Uh, how many people sit on the board for RSL?
Yeah, the RSL Holdings Company has, uh, one, uh, board member for every shareholder. So there's five.
And how long do they sit on that board?
Um, so that just depends currently, so, um, it's varied quite a bit. And so, um, I know in Edward Cardinal, um, just recently, I think it was a year, maybe three years ago. It was posted and it was, um, switched out, but there's also shareholders that have had their board members on there for, um. Since inception. Yep.
Randy?
Yep.
Is there ours is Randy, right?
Correct, Randy's in the audience.
Yeah, always still here. I can't see anybody over. Uh, Joe, nothing? Steven?
I just got the one there and that's on that related to fifteen percent. Did they give me, can you give me an example where this would come into play with our our shareholders?
Yeah, sure. So in the original unanimous shareholder agreement, if we are to pursue, let me give an example. So, um, let's say there's a, uh, we wanted to get into E V chargers, which we've talked about at our AGMs. And there's a business that is already providing consulting services or, um, services for companies such as Tesla to implement E Vs. If we wanted to acquire this small business, we currently would have to go to all the shareholders, meaning councils. I'll be lost in ten minutes.
Good one.
Yeah, so in the the current unanimous shareholder agreement, um, we'd have to come to all the shareholders, which for the municipal shareholders would be council. And then it would be to Forest Ontario. And so, um, in the amended, uh, and presented, uh, unanimous shareholder agreement. What would happen is anything under nine hundred thousand dollars, um, that would be a decision that the board would be able to make for, uh, expediency. Um, but anything over nine hundred thousand dollars, um, it would still come to the shareholders.
Good, yes, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, makes a lot of sense. Yeah, Chris?
Uh, I think it's right. My my head a question around that as well, so. And and if 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 something happened, you bought something or we that the board bought something under nine hundred thousand dollars and it and it, you know, it just didn't go well, essentially, right? Uh, that that is something that still puts puts liability on on the shareholders to try and figure out how to make make amends for that. I'm assuming, obviously, this is, you know what I mean, like, I'm just, I worry a bit about the taxpayer risk, for instance, uh, on on the side of if something doesn't go well. One of these purchases, for instance, and we didn't have a say to get there. And so I I'm a little concerned about it, but maybe it can, you know, help me to feel better about it, I guess.
Yeah, so, uh, in our mandate and our strategy, it's all to, um, for shareholder value or for profitability, right? So, um, I mean, some utilities don't operate in that way. Sometimes they do provide services for certain shareholders or certain territories. That's not really our mandate currently, so it's all towards the eye of shareholder value or profitability. And so, um, and you also have the board members which, um, would report, uh, here as well. And so that's another way for influence to be to be had and to be able to, um, to work through, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. That's a good point. If you know, I mean, you know, to your point, we have somebody on the board as well and part of that decision. And and so we're, we have, we have, we have a conversation there, at least with somebody that we we've we've entrusted to do that. So thank you.
Yeah, it's good. Uh, and I'll just look to staff. Uh, I did read my, um, um, prep for for Thursday, but I forget. I'm assuming that this is on for approval for Monday night?
No, I I don't think so. Um. I mean, they'll let Simon's.
Yeah, so, uh, what we had agreed to in our December meeting was that we're gonna go through all the, um, committee of the holes. Or council meetings depending on each, uh, shareholder. And then once we have everybody's, um. Green light intention and then it would be, uh, passed through in bylaws in February is what the intention, yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, if there's nothing else, anyone round two, we're good? All right, uh, you better get out there and get your, uh, light shut off before your battery's dead.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again for your update. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to consent agenda. I don't believe there are any items on consent agenda. Uh, under discussion, nothing. So we're into action items and we are up for twenty twenty-five revised levy-based capital budget review. And I'm gonna look to the treasurer to bring that item forward.
Through the chair. Um, so what you have before you is the twenty twenty-five levy-based capital budget overview for revision one. So this is just the revisions that, uh, were brought up from our first capital budget meeting. So staff did present, uh, business cases for discussion and were asked to provide additional, um, uh, information and further discussion during the. The second capital meeting. So the revisions from the capital meeting number one included, uh, additions to the road program. Uh, including Cedar Grove Road from Fraser to Now and Pittston Road East. Uh, the second, um, revision was to the sidewalk program, so the removal of Waddell Street. And the third, um, was for the Cardinal tennis slash pickleball courts. So the use of, um, the remaining fifty percent of the grant, um, to come from the Cardinal Hydro Reserve. So you'll see those revisions, um, on the plan. And so with the revisions, um, the couple expenses listed, uh, just over point. Four point six million and of these expenses, just over two point one million are funded through reserves, grants, debt or and operating surplus. So an additional one point four would be required, um, from either levy debts or or dividend to fully fund the revision of the capital expenses. So. You would like, uh, I can go through line by line or if you would, uh, prefer, um, items to be brought, uh, based on the agenda.
Yeah, thanks, uh, uh, treasurer. I, um, I think we've gone, kind of gone through it line by line by line. I think the things that are in there, we requested to come in there. We're gonna go through the items, I think, you know, coming up. So I, you know, I think that's a.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple that I like to reduce. If you don't mind in the capital. Uh, one being the, um, um, splash pad. We have four hundred thousand in that. I'd like to, I'd like to change that to a hundred thousand, uh, with the contingency, if just like the tennis courts of getting. Um, of getting grants or donations towards that. So, and I would like to remove the generator from South Gore. Uh, of sixty-five thousand.
So through through the chair, um, one way that we can approach this is, uh, we do have, uh, recreation items. Um, in in the next, we we can, we can discuss these changes then and and make the changes as we go by department. If if that works, works better.
Works for me, but I, I, okay, I definitely want that.
Sure.
I think, yeah, I think you'll get a hundred percent. I'm with you. Uh, but I think as we're gonna end up, you know, in the all-night category again, if we don't. Get through it and do it, because we we do have the public works to work through and then we'll go through the recreation. We'll have lots of opportunity to to take things down. I think, you know, that's just a an over a very top level of what we asked the treasurer to bring us, bring us back. It's it's done now. Let's just move through the items and let's chop away as we go. Okay, okay. All right, so then that takes us to, um, I think the treasurer was finished there unless we otherwise needed. So, tw- so let's go to the public, the twenty twenty-five public works, uh, budget. I think that we've moved that up to item B. And I assume treasurer, you're gonna bring that forward or who's gonna speak to it? If Chris is gonna speak to it, he needs to come to the podium. I can't see him and I don't.
Forty-two.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, council members, um. So the Capital Roads Program. So the Capital Road, Capital Roads Program. Uh, uh, program is for to utilize, uh. Sixty-seven hundred meters of asphalt resurfacing and recon- reconstruction for twenty twenty-five. Uh, roads that have been requested in budget meeting number one. It's the Piston Road East and Cedar Grove Road have been added. The ro- road conditions that were were chosen were based on, uh, condition of roads of our roadways. Uh, so from a fair to a poor condition or a poor to, or basically a poor condition to a fair. And we're trying to achieve, uh, getting the roadways to a fair to good condition.
Certainly, like asset management plan. Yeah, no, certainly. And I, I think the two additions are recognizing that there's, there's even a greater need. And and a will to move forward, so, um. I don't get the sense at this time. I I'm gonna look to see if anybody wants to speak to the roads program, but.
With regards to what, what we have on there right now, you mean?
Yeah.
I I mean, I I, you know, I I still, I mean, I know we added, you know, when when we were presented with this, we had a nice balanced. You know, I think it was, I think it was something like one point eight and then one point three. And it was, we had, we had an annual number that was sort of balanced and and, uh. You know, I I think I'm having second thoughts about like, you know, Pittston Road, it is pretty bad shape and I wouldn't mind seeing that. But, uh, there's other reasons that, you know, Cedar Grove Road, I'm not sure I want to keep it there anymore, to be honest, at this point. I drove there the other day. And it's not as bad as I thought it was in that section. And there could be other reasons that, you know, we want to wait on that one as far as I'm concerned as well. So I'm not sure when to keep that one there to be honest, so.
Okay, look to see what anyone else says. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to Chris, the roads boss, uh, I was reading it and, uh, if we do Cedar Grove Road. We're gonna do two kilometers in that road and you're estimating it six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So if we do Piston East and you're gonna do two point six kilometers, how come it's only three hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Different process. Uh, so the, so the chair, uh, the, uh, what we plan on doing for that. Is be able to pulverize and pave, so take the old surface up, put, uh, additional gravel. And so we we usually pulverize it to a depth of a hundred millimeters and add six inches of gramma. So the cost, the cost would be in the pulverization.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Yeah. Nothing to remove, nothing to remove.
No, sir.
Nothing to remove.
Uh, Karen, John? Okay, um. Do any of these come? They don't come with recommendations at this point, right? It's just, we're looking for stuff to, yeah, okay, all right. So then you can move on, I think, to sidewalk capital? No, is that where we are? Yeah. And so the only change in sidewalk capital has been what the ask was, which is the removal of the wad. It wasn't the removal of the full Waddell Street. It was just the sidewalk, uh, from it. But assurances that the pavement would go where the sidewalk was and it would be dilated.
That's correct.
Okay, does anyone have any issue with with that? Okay, we're good. So we're on to roadside mower attachment then?
Yeah, and I agree, um, of purchasing it and taking that option. I do believe maybe Mr. Grant can help me. He said option four, but we're gonna go one pass. Is that right?
That that's correct.
So, yeah, I'm agreeable to buy a brand new one, put the other one up for for auction or whatever we do. And just make that one pass and not go to the fence line like we always did.
So I'll supporting of option, buy a new mower, support option four for services going forward.
Yes, that's that's mine.
All right, let's hear some discussion on that, if there is any support or against. It's four options there to consider and need input. Yep, oh, you just shut it off.
Sort of that. Yeah, you know, I I agree with buying it. I'm I'm sitting on the fence a little bit about, uh, reducing services to it. Um, you know, at least if we do that, if we do it, then I'd like to be able to reconsider this again next year, once we see the results of that, if we do end up doing that this year. Uh, because, you know, we know, we talked about some of the positives and the negatives and, uh, uh, you know. If if we start to see more frequency of accidents and stuff along the road, which is one of the things that we talked about as a potential, uh, problem. Then then I want to make sure that we can address that as quickly as possible and and reverse that part of the decision, to be honest, so. But that's my only concern on that one is is the safety on the roads around that areas, those areas. So I was, so I was in favor of us, I was in favor of option two, um, uh, which is the, um. The, hold on, yeah, the the, well, option two was the S P twenty-five thousand to buy a new one, right? Is that not what I'm seeing there?
No, replacing system more.
Fifty-five or seventy-five?
Fifty-five or seventy-four, option two. You agree with option two?
So, uh, yeah, I I agree with option two as opposed to option, well, I mean.
No change in service by anyone.
Change in service by anyone, yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. You spoke to safety in terms of accidents. Was there a discussion about that that I missed?
You were, you were here. No, the conversation was, yeah, the conversation was surrounding, you know, animals can hide in that area potentially and jump out. So that you have less time to react as you're driving down the highway was one of the, one of the things that was stated at the time, so.
Okay, uh, I don't remember that, but, um, I'm gonna look to, um, yeah, okay, sure. I'm not saying I didn't, I'm just saying I don't remember it. Um, looking to, um, Director of Operations, past practice was one swipe? Your mic's not on.
I don't know, sorry. Through the chair, uh, past practice has been fence to fence in all locations. Some locations you can't get to due to trees or other obstacles, but typically it's been fence to fence. I'd like to add though, if we do only do the single pass, uh, for daylighting and intersections, we will go fence to fence.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with that. Good plan.
Okay, some more.
Yeah, I agree with the, with the deputy mayor, with the, uh, just make the one pass and. Trust that staff's gonna see the spots where they need to do more and they seem to be pretty good at it.
I agree with the deputy mayor and Chris, uh, one pass, but I like Chris's idea too as well, the council word. Checking it next year to see if comparable.
So four. Karen?
I'm fine with four. I think that's fine.
I think it's fine for one year, but I think you want to concentrate, treat that. Edrisberg did this years ago, one pass, one year, but we generally split it. One part of the township, we go fence to fence, other part, we go one one pass and rotate. If you don't, in about two years, you're gonna be going, going with a high hole with your brush cutter on there going. Because you'll have brush growing up, your mower won't be able to mow anymore, so.
You're saying alternate like north, south type of thing?
Or wherever you want, whatever the busiest, worst roads are, there's some state things, because some roads don't have much. Because landowners take care of a lot, a lot of it.
Glad you said that.
Do any show.
Okay. And we will?
So I think the consensus is around, is around four with, um, a look for, uh, different options again. In next year's budget, if I'm hearing that correctly.
But a new mower.
Definitely a new mower. So I think it's it's option five or option four that we'd see move forward and the other, the other three can disappear. For now, okay. And so then we've dealt with those three, so we're on to the structural wall repair options. So I don't know if you need to speak to this unless there were some changes. To it, trying to find my way. Are there any changes to it? Dave, do you want to speak to them?
Sixty-one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just before we move on from the mower attachment, what we would do is for. Twenty twenty-five year, we would use this as a pilot project with one pass. Evaluate that at the end of the season, bring that back to see what changes, uh, committee and council would want. It doesn't have to be something that we commit to and it has to be that way forever, but, um, if you're, if you're interested in trying that, we'll try that. Uh, for this season, see what the feedback is. I'm sure it will vary, uh, substantially. But, uh, you you'll have an opportunity to evaluate how you want to move forward, whether you want to do, um, every second year. Whether you want to, uh, mix it up year to year.
Good. Okay.
Uh, with respect to the, uh, structural wall repair, uh, had a a little bit more conversation with our engineers. So the fifty thousand that we had for the structural repair, pretty accurate, um. If you needed to, you could probably drop that to forty-five. I would recommend staying at fifty. Uh, um, but with the, uh, partial wall, uh, we've dropped that from twenty-five to ten. And ten thousand is for that, uh, partial wall, whether concrete or block. If you don't want to go con- uh, concrete or block, we can, we we can find another mechanism that may be a little bit cheaper. It's just the feeling is when you're doing that structural repair on that wall, there might be some synergies in in completing that partial wall at that time. So if the, uh, if the feeling is amongst committee through their discussion that they'd prefer, uh, not to do the partial wall. It of concrete or or block, we can, we 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 can find an alternative solution.
Okay, thank you, uh, COO, uh, discussion.
I'm a little confused. Uh, what option are we picking here? Uh, we say the fifty, uh, I thought we, I thought we discussed the seventy-five. Uh, to do required work to return the structure back to original state and put in a bumper. Is that right or?
Be option two plus a bumper.
So, yeah, so the, so the, the recommendation was to complete the structural wall repairs at fifty thousand. And a partial wall at twenty-five thousand, which would have equaled that seventy-five thousand with some refinements. That could be down between fifty-five and sixty thousand if you wanted to proceed that way.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, you have my vote. You have my vote to go on that, to complete and do it right.
Okay, further looking.
No, I agree with the deputy mayor.
You're good, good.
Yep, no, good here.
Good, good. John, anything? Good. My only question to that, Dave, and I don't want to delay this meeting too long. But, um, is there any drawback to having, you know, that little area? um, is there any drawback to having, you know, that little area blocked walled off uh, inside? Does it restrict further further uses or other uses usages? When it's not just, we're putting that wall in just for where we put cold patch, right? So, you know, I I mean, to me, the barrier option seemed to make a lot of sense because it didn't limit the space, but.
So, Mayor, I I think that's a fair point, but I think by doing that wall, it would be configured in such a a a manner that we could utilize that other area for storage of of certain items and, uh, keep the area, I would say, a little, a little cleaner as opposed to just what we would utilize in Jersey barriers. Sometimes they'll get moved and blocked and it gets gets messy. I think this tidies it up and, uh, I can certainly report that, uh, some some substantial efforts have been made within the, uh, within the works garage to to get that back to, uh, to to a good standard and there there's momentum and and certainly I think this would add to that.
Yeah, okay. I certainly, uh, appreciate the work that's been done. We've been there to decorate the, uh, the float a few times for parades and and the cleanliness of of the, uh, of the garage fan, like, it's unbelievable. Um, and we certainly, if this is gonna help, uh, uh, continue that momentum that you've got uh, for such a small amount of money, I'm I'm certainly in favor of that, so. Um, and I think the nodding of heads around the table, um, indicate that that they certainly support the recommendation as it's written. So, so the, but your, the work that you're coming back to us with is different than what option one, two, and three say now, though, right? Like you're saying it's fifty thousand plus another eight to ten, which would make it upset of sixty?
Mike? So, so, so the fifty, um, yeah, so option three, it indicated, uh, doing the structural repair and the partial wall at at an estimate of seventy five thousand, you can put that estimate at sixty thousand now.
Okay, it doesn't, in the recommendation, it doesn't actually say the number, but I mean, we're gonna approve number, I think we've all nodded. On option three, I think that's the right thing to do, so. Okay, I think there's, it's pretty clear that that's what they want to move forward with either way. So, okay, uh, on to five, uh, oil and grit separator.
Um, as indicated at the last meeting, you don't really have a choice.
Yeah, and so the option was number two, right? Yeah, so agreement, everyone?
Agree.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so oil and grip separator stays holding tank.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the discussion, um, to be had at committee was whether you were going holding tank or a a full on septic system.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I know for me what one I pick, but yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to the director of operations, replacing with a septic system. Where would we put that? Because there's no room there. If if it has to be made the way rural area houses are made, like, it's gonna be five feet higher than the the ground. And we have a onson hut sitting right behind it.
So through the mayor to, uh, councillor Smale, in speaking with one of the, um, contractors that they have a an ability to, it wouldn't be your, uh, traditional system, it would be, uh, a condensed, like a, like a media filtration system that wouldn't take up the same, uh, um, same footprint. So, uh, I I believe that we can, uh, fit that within, uh, within that yard and what it may require is, uh, sort of a pump to pump it out over to the, um, uh, which would be, um, south of the, uh, salt shed where there is a little bit of a, um, a grass area there. Maybe where that, uh, where that bed lies.
Okay, uh, but one more question, uh, it's still gonna come by the fuel pumps, right? So if there's a leak at the fuel pumps, will that affect this, the septic system or?
I would, uh, there there would certainly be that potential. Uh, if there was a undetected fuel leak, however, the fuel tanks are above ground in containment walls, double walled, um, very unlikely that there would be substantial leakage into the ground, it would be contained within that area.
Really? Thank you, sir. That's all.
I'm just, I'm gonna go back to what I had said in the original meeting, ten thousand and then, so then we're looking at periodic pumpouts costing between seven fifty and a thousand, even if it was a thousand a year for twenty years, that gets us to thirty thousand. The, what's the expected life? Of it? Twenty, thirty?
Sorry, of the, uh, of of the holding tank?
Yeah, the, sure, yeah.
Uh, I would, I I would say you you certainly, uh, with that holding tank could get twenty five years.
Okay, and and out of option three, which is the largest investment, we're gonna, it'll still require a periodic pumpout. What's the life expectancy of it and how many pumpouts over that time?
So difficult to say, I guess it would depend on the, um, the solids buildup. Within that, uh, on the frequency of use, it's not, um, it's certainly not going to get the same amount of use as, uh, a a as a household would, so you're probably extending uh, the intervals between those pumpouts. Either one, yeah, either one, um, either, either one will work.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm a number two guy, but, um, let's, that didn't sound right. Let's, um, talk about septic. It's bad, it's bad, um. Joe or Steve, you wanna? Two?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can see benefits of both, but I I think I'm leaning towards number two, just just on the cost and 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 the the placement. But I was a little worried about people driving over it too, so.
I'm for number three, reason being, uh, it's explanation.
Mic on, please.
Mic, please.
Why do you want everybody to hear me? That's why, uh, is because you can, uh, our roads crew picks up all dead animals along the roads in our township. And if you put a dead animal in that tank, it saves the life of being, uh, pumped out. So every animal you put in there, you could add like six months to to before you have to pump out, like, you can go three years, four years instead of two, just so you know.
Didn't want to hear that.
Okay, um, two at three, two at three at two, so I think you can go with two.
Yep.
Think the consensus is two, um, you were on your own at that point, start talking dead animals. Um, uh, fleet, so number seven, fleet coordinator. Do you wanna? Do you want to speak to it all again, or? If you don't, we can just discuss it, so.
I I I think, Mr. Mayor, if there are any clarification questions that you might have before your discussion, I'll certainly attempt to answer them, but, um, pretty firm on 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 my recommendation forward, so it can be discussed and decided upon.
Yeah, okay, thank you, D O L. Yep.
Uh, so, you know, I I I still find this one a very interesting one. I I feel like it might be on my own island on this one, but, uh, I mean, I did have a chat with so with various people, uh, uh, this weekend at Roma, which was like good conversations and I, one of the people I people I talked to represented, uh, Napa Auto Parts and 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 I I still believe, I know, you know, when I look at some of the details in here, I do think that maybe there's a way to do this, uh, with less startup costs and be able to to not be as, you know, maybe, you know, in in a phased approach, but also not necessarily storing all the inventory ourselves and building up the tools and everything right away. So, you know, I wouldn't mind if 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 the if the consensus here is we're gonna reject this for this time around, uh, I'd propose that maybe an option number three, which would be to, uh, have staff go back and review and see if there is a way to do a phase, a phased in approach at a, at a lesser cost per annum until we get to that, because uh, I I feel like the savings will be there and it'll, that they'll be able to, uh, uh, save some money for the township, to be honest, on repairs, so.
Yeah, well, well articulated. Steve?
Option one.
Joe, one, Marty?
Option one.
Karen? Mike?
I can, I can see the benefit of option three, but, um, I don't know. I mean, I I think in the long run, it would be a good choice.
Okay, John?
I, you know, my opinion on it, I think you're throwing a lot of money away here all all the time on service calls and stuff, that you're not taking into account how much you're spending on them. We got a lot of fleet trucks and vehicles now that you have to safety every year. I'm sure most, most, uh, they correct me, but I imagine most of the safeties on, on the tow trucks and stuff like they run between two and three thousand dollars for, for, so, or higher. And and you do that in your own shop, it does. The safeties on your vehicles in the years pretty near gonna pay your cost of your labor, so. And and any service call you get from any of the fleets that are are coming now is pretty near a flat two hour rate that they charge you as soon as you pick up the phone and call it, they leave the shop, they're paying two hours on it. At anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, depending on which shop you're you're coming from. If you're coming from Kefal, where most of our trucks are, it's a flat three hundred dollars as soon as you call them. So, you're not long until you you have your fleet coordinator paid first. As far as the startup cost, I think they can be lower, lower down, a lot less put in for parts. A lot of you have the a business and you make your right contacts, you got twenty four hour service on most parts, some of it's, any local oil filters and stuff like that, it's pure four hours from Napa and 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 they're there for it for you, so. I don't know. You just don't want to spend the money, you're gonna spend it anyway, so you spend it in another way and you're gonna have a lot longer wait for your truck to get back in the road, so.
Yep. Uh, and I think we probably all agree with almost all of those, those comments, uh, I think from my perspective, uh, and I know this is a committee meeting tonight, but it's also budget meeting number two. And I think from my perspective, I would love to have this discussion over a period of two or three or four committee meetings where we actually see a solid business case that shows us, you know, a model for the year, how much the actual costs on parts would be, not just estimates, but a, an actual business uh, case that that we can move, uh, forward for next year's budget, so. Um, I think it's a fantastic idea for the future, but I just think that there's, there's more to be had in this, there's more to be flushed out, so. Um, for that, I'm a, I'm a one as well. Um, so I think that that ultimately, unless anybody else wants to weigh back in, I think that'll see it removed from this budget, but I, but I do think in hearing that, I think it's worthwhile, uh, bringing it back at once budget's done, uh, to see if that there, there is interest in the group on moving something forward with more information, so. Take it out. Thanks, D O L. All right, so brings us to, help me.
Page three.
All right, okay, so, uh, chief, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in my, in my business case at the committee meeting, I I went through the advantages of, uh, an early purchase with the challenges of today's markets, uh, I wasn't going to, uh, rehash that that again. Uh, in conversation with a couple of suppliers, it appears there, there may be units available in twenty twenty five and that is likely going to be the most economical option for us. Uh, currently, there's only the deposit included in the budget. However, if the option of a twenty twenty five delivery is of interest to to the committee, uh, the purchase amount will need to be approved prior to issuing an RFP. Uh, if there's no interest in a twenty twenty five option, we'll simply, uh, word the RFP to be a twenty twenty six or later delivery.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, that chief. And and the reason, I just want to make sure that, and I'm sure it's back in here again, but the business case was the potential unreliability and the increase in emissions. Or the increase in re-regulation of emissions.
Correct, correct. Then the new, the new EPA is going to increase the cost of of chassis. Uh, they're gonna, they're hard to get already, and it's just going to get worse, and I think, uh, we will be well served with sticking with the proven technology instead of getting the first year model in, uh, twenty twenty six.
Okay, and so, so help me in the fleet part, so the one that one will come out of line, like one would come out of use that we have now.
Correct.
And, and does it have useful life left in it? I mean, its replacement's due for twenty twenty seven, it has to be replaced by that.
Correct, yes.
So, so it has a couple of years of useful life in it. Is it worth anything then when we, when we do that?
So, Mr. Mayor, what what we've done is we, we basically keep the the newest of the old and we just keep shuffling trucks through. So ideally, uh, if we could get the truck separated enough, uh, every ten years, we would buy a new pumper and 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 keeping the third one in reserve until it hits thirty years of age and then just every, every ten years, we just keep bumping trucks through the fleet.
In my recollection, though, we replaced a pumper last term, didn't we?
Uh, no, we placed a tanker.
Oh, was it tanker? Oh, I remember this conversation. It was a long drawn out one of, is it a tanker pumper? Yeah, I remember that now, okay. And so, so when would the next one be after this one then?
So twenty twenty seven is this pumper, the other one is, uh, two thousand and ten, so twenty thirty.
Okay, all right. And do we have any idea what the value you're gonna get out of the last one, or is there a suggestion of in here that what we're doing with it?
Uh, there was no suggestion, but I would, I would take a a guess at thirty to fifty optimistically for, for the one we would be, uh, deeming surplus.
Somebody's gonna buy it and fill pools with it or something like that? Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, discussion. Need some direction. Who wants to go?
I'll go.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I I think the chief said, uh, one of the conversations was whether we we include twenty twenty five in an RFP and 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 I think we should. I think we should do that, um, uh, just just to help to try and 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 spread that that division up to, you know, five years for now, and then maybe our kids can down the road, get the, get to the ten year point, because it's gonna take some time at thirty years cycle time on our lead time on, or not lead time, but lifetime on a one of these machines. Um, so I think that's, I am in favor of that for sure. Um, and I mean, if if for some reason something comes along this year and that becomes a reality, uh, he does also mention here about a ten year debenture potentially on these things, and so, while I don't love the, I do that necessarily, you know, we could do part of it that way so that we can extend it so that it becomes a five year payment or something and, uh, and and sort of spread the load, but I think that's a conversation that we may have to have um, down the road, if we find one for twenty twenty five that we take possession of in twenty twenty five, but so I'm in favor of including it and, uh, and and going forward that way, um. I did have a conversation last meeting as well about the canoe, the canoe system, I'll have, I actually had talked to them for about an hour or so at the, uh, the Roma convention, it was a good chat. I know more about them, and I have some some pamphlets I'll give to, uh, the C O on that in case he wants to bring it forth to everybody else, but I'm comfortable with the knowledge I have there and I understand that. I just think because of the value of a, uh, of a pumper truck, that I think this is probably one of the ones that we would RFQ, but I understand how it works and so maybe on some of the smaller purchases, not necessarily the same, I get that, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna look to the chief again, and can you refresh my memory? I look back, I know there's seventy thousand in the budget for this year, but what's the value of this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the the seventy thousand was ten percent of, uh,
So seven hundred thousand?
Of a gas, yes.
So, so if the ask is is potentially to add it to the twenty twenty five budget, the implication for those of us sitting around the table is that we'd be going from one point four million, uh, that we already have, uh, to find funding for to, uh, two point one million. Roughly. Right?
Correct.
Yeah, well, so much for reducing, okay, um, uh, we still need more discussion on on how we're gonna, uh, proceed with this, if we are. Need some conversation, guys.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the chief, how much would we save if we bought it in the twenty twenty five budget?
Through the chair to councillor Martel. Just with my, my discussions with some suppliers, I would guess it would be, it would be six figures. It would be interesting to see where the, uh, where the proposals came in for different, uh, years deliveries, but I think they're having a hard time pricing, uh, vehicles for twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven, just based on the costing is unknown for chassis right now, so, uh, it's very, very challenging market.
Wow, um, it's not due until twenty twenty seven, is that right, chief? This is twenty twenty five, we got two years?
That is correct.
And no guarantee, if it comes up in twenty twenty-seven, it's going to be here until twenty twenty-nine. What happens? It's over thirty years.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, if, if a pump, we gotta change it every one. Every twenty years?
Twenty years, correct.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so every, so we do it, uh, we order it in twenty twenty-seven, doesn't come in twenty twenty-nine. The pumper's twenty-two years old, does that affect us?
Through, through the chair to the deputy mayor, uh, it, it wouldn't affect us, but the, it would just put the next two pumper purchases that much closer together. Because we've got one that's due in twenty thirty, so if we wait till twenty twenty-nine, we're going to be back to back.
Then just, so I'm going to look to, to staff to speak to asset management plan, because I mean, we are supposed to be using it as a, as a guiding document. We're talking about replacing a three quarter of a million dollar apparatus three years early, so. I'll look to our C O for a little bit of help on this.
Yeah, I, I, I think. One option, uh, that's available to, to the committee and the council is, uh, just to allow the, um. To allow the fire chief to proceed with an RFP to, um, to, to see what those options are. Um, and then reassess once, uh, once we have better numbers on, on the difference of cost between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, um, brother, who else?
Not quite sure on the math, but ten percent of seventy thousand dollars that we have to put up in order to order, am I correct?
Can you repeat your question, seventy thousand?
Well, you said it was seven hundred thousand dollars for it, so, and somebody mentioned ten percent. At seventy thousand. To order or down payment, whatever it was. So if we, uh. Give that, can we take two years to pay it? That way you can put it in the budget for two years?
Through the chair, yes, absolutely, um, you know, you can, if, if this. Is ultimately going to be financed, I mean, you know, it, it gives us more options. It's just, I think, how, how the, the business case, um. It probably would have been better just to come as its own separate, uh, pre-approval item to do an RFP. Um, so that way, it, because I think including the down payment assumes we're getting it in twenty twenty-five. When that's not necessarily the case, where there should just be an RFP done to see what the delivery dates are and what the options are. So that way committee can make a decision on whether they want to actually defer to twenty twenty-seven or buy it in twenty twenty-five. If that makes sense.
Then we end up with an unbudgeted item of three quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah, and that's, and that's not, that's not advisable either.
Yeah, I, I, I think from my perspective, and, and while I want to support this and I understand the emissions discussion. Uh, replacing, uh, a, a pumper that's got three years of useful life left. When we're under budget constraints of, you know, finding one point four already. Um, I, I struggle to do that, I'm, I'm fine with putting a deposit in and, and looking to find, uh, prices. But I, I, I don't know that for me that this isn't included in my budget, so I'll, I'll say that to the group. Um, but I haven't heard anything about how anyone wants to proceed yet, really, so. And we need to give direction, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm agreeable that to send it out. But I'd like to put it in the twenty twenty-six, actually, twenty twenty-six budget.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, that, that will, that will help.
Okay.
You got a mic, you're going to speak, Joe, sorry.
I am going to, uh, agree with what the deputy mayor suggested.
I'll follow right along, I think it's a great idea.
You know, I mean, I, I keep saying it, and then, and maybe I'm having the wrong conversation here or something. But we're, you know, the, if a quick option three is just an RFP to see, because then we'll be able to get the difference. If, if in fact it's three hundred thousand dollars cheaper, if you go with buying it in twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-six, I want to know that. And if we don't go and say, yeah, put twenty twenty-five in here as an option, then, then we're never going to get that information. So I, I mean, I'm holding fast, and I think, you know, maybe we take the seventy thousand dollar conversation out of that and just say, you know, you could, it's, it's, we're just putting it in the reserve anyways to say, you know, what if? But the reality is, you know, if it's that much cheaper, we could figure out how to do it to save the money to the township is all I'm saying. So I'm still saying option three, but, uh, but anyways, whatever we want to do, guys.
Um, I'll look to C O again, so is it, is it reasonable to get, um, you know, like, is somebody going to be able to give you an accurate RFP of what something is going to cost in twenty twenty-seven? I mean, I get that they're going to be able to give us an accurate cost if they could deliver it this year. Or if they could deliver it next year and make it this year, and it's twenty twenty-five that we receive in twenty twenty-six. But are they really going to be able to give us, you know, something that says we're going to save three hundred thousand dollars by buying it this year?
Um, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the chief to, to weigh in, but, but first. Um, when we knew for, we did this in Public Works last year for the plow truck. When we knew it was going to be an eighteen month, uh, delivery, we did the RFP in the year before. So I think essentially we're, we're kind of asking to do the same, uh, is to do the RFP in twenty twenty-five for either a twenty-six or twenty-seven delivery. But there might be a chance that we can take it in twenty twenty-five when the RFP comes in, but we, we can't, um. We would have to put it in the RFP that we would be amenable to a twenty twenty-five delivery.
Okay, I'm going to just look to the treasurer before you ask the chief that. Um, for, from a reserve standpoint to replace this, this vehicle. Do, like, where are we in reserves and how much would we be on the hook for if we, you know, what's the suggested amount that would come from reserves, the, the, how are we going to fund it?
So for, uh, buying equipment, I believe, uh, the reserve is sitting around two hundred, maybe just a little bit over two hundred. Um, so would be the difference between if we wanted to plead, um, that reserve and what we're planning on putting in for twenty twenty.
Okay, and, and I guess then looking forward in that asset management plan, when's the next fire vehicle? This one's the only one between now and twenty twenty-seven, I'm assuming. And so if we're going to deplete the reserve to do that, when's the next vehicle due after that? And what's the plan to build the reserve back up to get that vehicle?
So from the recommendation from the fire chief, uh, it, it's a five year. If that's correct. Um, so for, it would be five years, um, but if we're not planning on using reserves to solely. Purchase, right, um, we do have other options, um, to, to use debt as well to purchase the, the pumper.
The, 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 sorry, um, the last truck that was purchased in twenty twenty-three, I believe, we used reserves. So if we're going to take the opinion to do one for reserves, one through debt, and then one for reserves to give us the chance to save up, to, to do that. This would be the truck that we would take, uh, dead on to, to purchase.
Speak to us.
I think you gotta, gotta look. At, at one thing as your chief, it's, it, the one now I get, if you're, it could be available now is on the technology we're, we're using. And now, you wait to twenty twenty-seven or so, they're going to go into newer technology. We've got cotton roads, as you well remember. Previous council jumped on new technology trucks. They didn't work out too, too well, they had a lot of bugs in them, cost us a lot, a lot of money. I agree with the chief, if you, if you can get the technology we're using now that all the firefighters are, are used to using. And you save money by, by doing it, even if you have to go in debt for it. Your fervor off, you're likely less op, chance of, of running into difficulties with them. The trucks right now are proven trucks, they've been on Mars for what, ten years or so, the trucks right now that they're using pretty well, so.
Alright.
You gotta look at, but I, I think you're, as you see, you always said, you're, you're kind of working without all the knowledge.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm about to ask.
Find out exactly what, what you're dealing with, and then if you got to borrow the money to do it, if you're saving money. And, and with all the. Trouble in the North America right, right now. You don't know where, where are these trucks in years' times.
Going to come from.
Going to end up, so.
Or where they could come from, and what a tariff on them might be, uh.
Through the chair, I just, sorry, I, I pulled up the reserves, I was, uh, recollecting the communications equipment reserve amounts. So for fire department, I just want to give you an accurate amount, so at the end of twenty twenty-four, there's three eighty-three.
Three three, yeah, okay, I don't.
And for twenty twenty-four, the transfer in was twenty-five thousand, so.
So not much, okay, so, so I think if the table is amenable to this, then, then we, we can do RFP. Is everybody okay with, with RFP? With option, like variable options for delivery date, because I've heard, you know, twenty twenty-five possibility of twenty twenty-six. And then, um. Options for, uh, ba- based on that, like maybe a report on that, and then, and then funding options. Realistically, I mean, if we're going to do it, we have to know how we're going to fund it, that's the information, I think, piece that, that count, um, Mr. Hunter was speaking to. And I think that way at least we, we have the full information in front of us before we make, before we make a decision, right? Because, I mean, that's, you know, seeing it laid out in front of us, you know, funded over thirty years, if, if that's, you know, the useful life of, of it. If that's something that we, we can do, then maybe that makes a decision, you know, easier and more, more able to, you know, for the group. You can see everybody's pretty quiet on this one, so, um, uh, I, I just think having some more options and having a bit more information on this one is something that, that we need. For, to make an accurate decision or full discussion, is that fair? Can I have a nodding of heads or a nodding of nose? Steven?
Yeah.
You okay? Yep. Alright, is that clear, clear enough? That way we haven't said no, we haven't said yes.
Through the chair, so my understanding is that, um, for, there's going to be an approval for RFP for twenty twenty-five, looking for options. As to delivery date, either twenty twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-seven, and looking at those options and then bringing back a report. As to what the funding options are for each.
Even if it's, you know, split over two years, if it's, you know, a combination of debt reserves and taxation, whatever, some options that we can chew on. Okay, alright. Everybody good? Okay. So we haven't added that to the, to the total that we need, I'm looking at the C O and the treasurer, we haven't added anything then. We're still at one point four, okay. Alright, so now, if I'm not mistaken, we're to item D. Well, item C, but which is really item D, which is, which is we're back to the, um, Johnstown play structure replacement. And then, and then I guess if we're going to give more information on that, that first of things that we want taken out, then that, that would be the time.
For sure, and, uh, the, the business cases that were presented by, uh, recreation were, were kind of the top three items. There are other items on the, the spreadsheet too, that, uh, um, if you have further discussion, then, uh, let us know.
Sure, absolutely, thank you for that, okay. So first, I think before we go into the play structure discussion, um, did you, we started recreation, you wanted to remove the generator?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so let's see if there's support around moving the generator, anyone?
Sixty-five thousand.
Can, uh, Deputy Mayor explain why he wants to have it removed, so we can understand, maybe we can agree with him?
Well, just because of our one point four million shortfall. And I think it was brought up to have it under, uh, emergency meeting. So it's not, it's not something that. We really had, it just came forward with the emergency meeting, so if we can save sixty-five grand, we can save sixty-five grand.
Karen or John, anything? Nothing, Joe, anything?
No.
Yes?
Uh, yeah, I, I just, I can't remember the, uh, the, the, the need, the business case, and I can't seem to find it for the generator itself. But, uh, if the recreator, sorry. Good advice, that'd be great, because there's, I'm struggling with, I can't remember why it was urgent, if you will.
It's not.
Yeah, it, uh, through the chair to councillor Ward, no, it, it definitely isn't urgent, but as, uh, the deputy mayor indicated. When we had our round table, round table discussion on our emergency management team, there was discussion about the Johnstown Community Center. And whether or not there was a, um, a backup power source there, and it was no, so I just provided one.
Okay, thank you very much, no, that's fair, uh, no, I, I can see us taking it out of there for the budget as well, it does not, it's not, it's not evident, it would be nice to have a backup there at some point, for sure. But, uh, you know, for this year, maybe not, yep.
Okay, and so, and I'll make that official then, so I'll, I'll support the removal of, of that while I support the, uh, emergency management work and the great work we do. Um, we've, uh, done well with that one this point, and I think it's something that we can put on a list for, for further down the road. But I, I don't, I struggle to see the, the need for it, so. Um, I think it's safe that we've given direction to, to swipe that one out. Alright, so then we're on to the play structure, uh, replacement, and do you have any further information? Um, Mike, to, to that?
No, I do not.
Okay, uh, and, discussion. Anyone? Yes, sorry.
Thank you, um, I was up today. Pardon?
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, through the chair to the recreation director, I was up and looking at the place, play structure today, and, uh, I looked at it really hard. The only thing I could see was a circular slide was cracked at the top and one cracked about three inches long on the side. Like everything else seems to be in perfect shape.
That is the larger slide, or sorry, through the chair to, uh, councillor Smale, that is the larger slide that needs to be replaced, as I'd indicated. And the other one is also showing some signs of wear and tear, so if we replace the two slides, you're looking at over thirty thousand dollars to do that, if they're available. Uh, because the play structure are so old.
So you're talking the other two slides at the very end?
That is correct, yeah.
Look, where, where, I didn't see that today, where, because I was looking it over pretty good.
No, the larger one is at the top, yeah, that, that is, that, that is the biggest concern. Um, and you're looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for that slide, and that is provided that the company can get one.
Okay, so if the company couldn't get one, could we not just take that off of there and build something on the end so the kids couldn't fall off the end?
Uh, we wouldn't add anything to the existing play structure, because that may not, uh, go as far as the CSA, uh, approval.
Uh, if I can just ask a question, uh, so, so our only option for. For a connection of any kind to this, to replace those slides that are there. Are the ones that are made by the same manufacturer at a cost of thirty thousand, there's no other option anywhere to replace those slides?
That is correct.
Wow, it's hard to imagine.
The problem, as I indicated, is the play structures are twenty years old. That's, that's the issue, uh, we replaced one three years ago and it took nine months to get for them to find. Uh, the small slide that we replaced, uh, at the Cardinal Pool, which is the identical system, uh, the identical unit.
Just, you know, and. The, and I, I hear you on the slide portion of this discussion, it just, the, it just doesn't seem like the end of useful life for the play structure, uh, itself.
The way I would look at this is it would be a positive, uh, for the community, because the existing structure that is there is not currently accessible to the handicap.
Right, we did discuss that, right?
Yeah, where the new one will have full functionality, uh, for someone that has. Um, some sort of disability, uh, to be able to function their way through the play structure itself.
And I guess in saying that, then, I mean, we have partnered with, um, one of our major industrial, uh, partners or one of our major, uh, commercial partners before in the replacement of one. Um, is there an opportunity where we can see if they want to partner again on this one?
I, uh, through the mayor, I have yet to reach out to any of our, uh, corporate sponsors. Waiting to find out exactly what, uh, council's wishes are. The one that, and I'll just say, uh, the mayor indicated that it was a replacement, the one at the, that we put in in Cardinal was not a replacement, it was just a new unit.
New one, yeah, 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 brand new, but that, I mean, ultimately, that's, yeah, sure. Um, so I guess in, in my eyes, I'd, I'd like to see this, uh, stay in, but with the direction that we see if we can find it, uh, um, you know. Uh, where we can contact that, you know, that one, that, that person that helped us in the last time, to see if there would be interest in, in, you know. Uh, we're looking at moving this forward, uh, would they have any interest in, you know, doing some kind of an arrangement with us to, to replace that? That, for me, I, I'd like to leave it in for that. for that, and then, uh, that certainly if we can get, you know, seventy-five cents on a dollar, or fifty cents on a dollar, then it certainly changes, things a little bit for me.
Uh, yes, I just have, you, you're saying, uh, to the chair, uh, to the facility manager, you're saying we can't get a, uh, um, slide, or possible that we can't get a slide and it's gonna be fifteen grand. So what happens if we can't get anything? Like, for a new eighty thousand dollars, they say, well, no, we can't get one for two years from now.
The, the issue with the existing slide, or the, the existing unit is that, that is there is that, they don't manufacture the parts for them anymore. So a new structure that we have is ready to go off the shelf.
Okay.
Shelf-ready project type thing.
Good, I'm willing to keep it in too.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's a safety issue for the kids, I mean, the disability stuff, we got lots of stuff around there that's not up, the snuff, uh, for the disability. You know, our change room really bad, so I, um, I really didn't like that, but, you know, we have it for the disability, we've got lots of other stuff that we, we gotta get changed to, uh, to put it up to, to the standards, so. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm all, I can keep it.
Yeah, okay. Um, uh, one other, one other question, I suppose, um, and, and it just comes at a, uh, uh, thought of something that the treasurer probably remembers from, from her time in, um, in Prescott, is that they purchased, um, a used from, uh, Perth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, at a considerable cost savings and was able to, uh, make that, you know, work, and it's, and it's, you know, sort of, extended the life of that useful, useful piece, and it was able to give them a, a pretty good thing. Is, do we know if there's others that have bought these types of, of structures, and if they're replacing them, maybe, maybe we can get some, you know, maybe we can.
Yeah, I, I have not investigated that, uh, option at all.
Thank you. I'm not, and, uh, uh, if we're gonna do it, let's go new. I'm not for use, I mean, we can't get a, a, you know, a single slide, guaranteed that maybe we can't, so I like to keep it in for, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, maybe if, if the facility manager could do a little bit of, homework and see if we can get maybe a couple of our good commercial people to kick in, it'd be great.
Yeah, they certainly, uh, they certainly, uh, help out with, uh, other projects, and it would be nice to know if they were interested in helping along with this one, so, let's go with that, and then we'll be back for another kick at this can at another time.
We're gonna keep it in though.
We're keeping it in, yeah, yeah, with just the direction, I think, uh, is clear to reach out to our community partners and see if they're interested in helping out. All right, um, piping retrofit, further on it at all?
Uh, again, no, nothing further on this. The quicker we can get the, uh, the RFP out, the quicker the chances of being able to have the work completed before we need the pool ready to go.
Okay, um, Mike, is there any guarantee that, um, um, even if we do get the RFP out, that it would be done in time for this year's season? I mean, we did this a couple of years ago with our other one, and it was done in the fall, I think, if memory serves me right.
I, yes, um, I, I have spoken to a couple of the, uh, companies that would be, putting bids in on it, and they would be able to fit in, into their spring schedule.
So we'd have it up and running, it would be done, up and running and ready to go, so in speaking with them, we know the dollar value that the suggestion of this is pretty, it's pretty tight, it's pretty accurate.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Nodding, 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 we can't mess with our pools, right?
No.
No, we've done too much investment in them already. Chris?
Yep.
Good, well, it does matter.
Uh, I'm still, uh, like some clarification on the, um, uh, splash pad. I'd like to remove the four hundred down to a hundred.
Okay, and.
Yep, so, um, through the mayor to the deputy mayor, so where we are with the, the current status of the splash pad is, um, the township has presented the fair board with a, a bylaw agreement that they are reviewing right now for us to be able to take over, um, the access to that piece of property, remove the building and what have you, so, the current plan would be that it would be, be very unlikely that we would be able to, obtain everything and have everything in place to be able to do the project this year. The plan potentially could be that once the agreement is signed and sealed, that between the public works and the rec department, over the course of the summer, we would remove the existing building on the property, have the land ready to go for, uh, the spring of next year to be able to start the project. So taking out a large figure, uh, would be, um, suitable right now. I don't know that you would even need a hundred thousand in there, unless you just wanted to be able to put some in, so that you're not having to go after three hundred thousand next year, and again, the prices are pretty secure, because we're going through the canoe, or the canoe, uh, procure, uh, policy, that it, the threshold would not probably go over the four hundred thousand.
So can we, can we, if you're saying it's not gonna be in, so let's budget it for twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, definitely would not make it. We definitely would not be putting it in this year. We wouldn't have the time to do it.
So does anybody object that we take it right out?
I'll run.
All right?
I'll run, I'll, I'll, on the chair, I'll run, yeah, yeah, so. Let me run it. I, I understand, I, I hear that, you're excited, I hear you. Um, do you wanna go then? You wanna speak?
Well, absolutely. We sat here last year, and we approved a bunch of things, and, and, you know, and, and we put this into this budget for this year on purpose, and we're taking it out again, and I'm not pleased about it, to be honest, you know, it's, uh, you know, and, and, and I know you're gonna say something, that's fine, but the fact is, you know, we sat here last year, I, I signed up to things that, you know, I wasn't comfortable for, because I knew we were gonna be able to do this, and so I'm not pleased, no, so, do what you wanna do as far as that goes, I wanna leave it in.
Well, I'd love to leave it in, but we also need to find a couple million dollars somewhere, right, so I'm gonna vote that we take it out.
You've already spoken, Karen?
I think if it's not going to be done next year, or this year, then it doesn't really, seem to make much sense to leave it in. I mean, I'm not saying that we don't do it, but, if it's not gonna be done this year, and we don't have to spend the money on it this year, then, I don't know, that just makes sense to me to.
Yeah, John?
Well, I'm going to like, Chris, this had been being bad around, in the previous council too, about, this here, and it keeps getting put off, and I know there's a lot of people around, the Spenciful areas getting a little fed up with recreation being, hundreds of thousands of dollars being spent in sofa and Cardinal and, and pickleball courts and, and diamonds and, and stuff out there, and nothing getting spent on recreation in Spenciful. And you have pools in both those areas, and for ki- kids, they have the river right close there too, where Spenciful kids have nothing, or water in the summer. So, I think if you're, you wanna be fair around the tables, you gotta do some recreation in Spenciful. If you wanna spend one point two or one point three million in recreation, you need to divide it around a little bit and, put some back here. Spenciful is a growing area with the amount of houses being built around here. Ten years ago, the school back here was half full. Now, now they're talking about expansion, because every class is overflowing. They have more kids than they can squeeze in. So, I think you need to schedule something in there. If it's not being done this year, they can't do it, that's one thing, but I think, it needs to be set in stone someplace that, if they can get the agreement and stuff, that Mike doesn't have to come back next year, year for permission to go ahead and do it, that when he, he gets an agreement next year that he can go ahead and contract and get it in.
Yep. Well, yeah, first of all, we never had that discussion last ca- council about a splash pad. Uh, this was brought on by us, this council, we said that we fixed up the pool in Cardinal, we did the pickleball in Johnstown, we're gonna get a pickle, or get a, uh, splash pad for, for Spenciful. We fought because we have no property, so it's very nice that, that, that the, that the, uh, fair board is helping us out. I don't have a problem leaving a hundred bucks. I made the resolution, to get a hold of the fair board and start this ball rolling, so I'm very, very involved and, and, and want this as much as anybody. So, but if it's not gonna be, done according to Mr. Spencer, why do we leave the money in? I don't mind sitting here tonight and leaving a hundred thousand in to show you, that I'm, I want it done. I haven't got an issue with that at all, but remove three hundred, none whatsoever.
No, I mean, I mean, we added one point two billion, we basically doubled our roads budget, and now we have a budget problem, I think it's a pretty easy solution, to be honest, and I wanna leave it in. You know, if we, even if we just reserve the money so that it's there, so that we can put it in in the spring next year, it'd be good, ready to go, I wanna do that, I wanna have, this discussion again, next, next, next time around, we still waiting for another six months before we finally get it in place, uh, in the summer of twenty twenty-six, I want it to be done before that, is what I'm saying, so I'd rather take a road out or roads out, uh, to cover the budget from that we created last week ourselves, uh, than take the splash pad out, so I'm, I'm not in favor, I'm still not in favor, plain and simple.
Yeah. Um, and I, I understand your frustration, um, but I, I would struggle to put four hundred thousand dollars into, reserves and take a road out that actually needs to be, needs to be paved when we can, and we can work that into next year's, near's budget. If, if it can't actually be done this year, why would we fund it fully this year? I, I just don't under- hear you, but I don't, I don't quite understand, so, I'm gonna look to Mike, just, just to make sure that, that there is no possibility of getting this done this year if it was funded.
Through the chair, um, I would say it was, it would be very unlikely. Um, just because of the projects that the, the company that I'm dealing with have already in, in place. Um, and there is some work to do, like, we've already done some testing, like, we've done some well testing, and that on the actual property, so we've actually are doing some steps, it's not like we're not doing anything. The biggest thing is gonna be to remove the, the building itself. Um, and I feel comfortable that we'll be able to do that, uh, in the course of the summertime and into the fall, so it would be ready. So I'm not opposed to putting it in, I think it'd be a great idea to have one as well. Um, I just don't think realistically, to say, a hundred percent that we could do it this year, I, I just, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
So, so there is work that can be done this year, like a well, a well could be done?
Well, no, the well is already there, like, the, the property has a well, we've already done testing it for the water pressure, not on the existing.
It's adequate.
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, so the, it would be the removal and the land prep that gets done this year.
That is the biggest.
And then at committee, if we put it out for an RFP then, at committee level, we could see, options for what we would be putting in in twenty twenty-six come forward with different pricing.
That is correct.
Same as what we just discussed about a pumper, different, you know, different options to fund it.
There's different options depending on what exactly you want for apparatuses and, and what have you, so I mean, I have a, a slew of different, options and ideas that they presented to us, to me, um, from an agricultural background and what have you.
Oh, that's cool.
Um, well, you know, we're taking into consideration that the fair board are giving us the property to do this, so we're trying to have a theme from an agricultural perspective for it. So.
All right, so I think from, for then from my way in on my perspective on this, then I am like one hundred percent, uh, in sport of leaving the hundred, the hundred thousand in this year and getting whatever work can be done to get that ready for twenty twenty-six. I am one hundred percent in sport of putting it out, so that we can get, you know, what our options are, and I'm one hundred percent committed to getting it done in the twenty twenty-six budget.
The idea would be to run the RFP in, uh, late September, um, with a completion of the RFP by, so that we could award it, uh, to like the first of November.
Would we see?
For the spring of.
Right, so would we see options in advance of that, though? I mean, like, this is a conversation, I think that, you know, looking to the person to the left of me, who's frustrated, and I understand his frustration, um, that we would have options that we, we would know, and we could actually market to the residents and, and gather some steam and get some excitement going about it.
Uh, I would present two or three different options as to what exactly they wanted, um, at a future committee meeting.
Yeah, so I, I think from my perspective, then we get some community input, we have time to make sure that people, you know, gain some excitement and understand what is coming, and maybe even have some say in, in what we, what we bring forward, that would make, make sense, that way it's a solution for, you know, a recreation thing that people of, uh, Spenciful and area actually want, instead of us, you know, not even having any idea what we're approving at this point. Correct, no, I don't know, that makes sense to me. Nodding, nodding, so I know you're still frustrated, but, but, it gets you where you need to be, it's just gonna be a year longer, and you've got commitment to get it done, and you're gonna get.
It's gonna get it done.
Hey, commitment last year. But anyways, all good.
We didn't bring it up last year. So I'm sorry.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay, everybody, I need a nod, yeah, okay, all right, so, that's clear? Okay. Uh, Spenciful Arena dehumidifier.
No further information on, on this one.
I don't think this is a discussion, to be honest.
A new one in or used one? You said you might get used one? Uh, through the chair to the deputy mayor, yes, our, our, my option would be if we could purchase a used one. Um, but if not, then we will purchase a new one. They are looking currently for us right now.
Okay. You're, I know, you're good on this, obviously, as well, Joe, Waddy, yeah, yeah, makes sense, Karen, yeah, John, yeah, 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 good. All right, so are we, that takes us through? Okay. Um.
Through the chair, um, there's still a few, um,
What am I missing?
Um, that were not business cases, but there's still a few rec items that are listed. Um, there's the south center UV upgrades, as well as the picket tables, garbage cans, uh, and then the holiday.
Sorry, what page is the overall at the start, um, treasurer?
Twenty-seven, seventy-four.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Not on mine. That's the. Wait, twenty-nine in my package, okay. All right, so where do you want us to start? Website revamp?
Uh, so the website revamp was, uh, a pre-approved from the admin.
So picnic tables and garbage cans, anybody?
Have any?
Yeah, I don't see that going anywhere. Uh, trucks already done. Uh, play structure, holiday signage.
Yeah, the holiday signage was put in, um, I believe council spoke to CAO.
Yep.
Regarding that.
And, and it's not just holiday signage, it's, it's actually remember and state banners, Canada Day banners, it's, it's, you know, I think that's been something that we've long asked for, and, and, yeah, for sure, uh, unless anybody's asking to take that out, I, oh, okay, and so piping, south center generator, south center UV, so what's a UV upgrade? Um. Except for the water?
Yes, it is, it was recommended, um, the UV system that is at, that, that facility is, um, maintained by the environmental service department, and, um, they have asked to replace, the UV system that's in there.
Is there a reason why?
Uh, maybe if I could, speak to her director of operations, she's a little bit more versed on it.
Good comment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, the, we've got UV, um, system, installed on all of our small systems, uh, Johnstown, Spenciful Arena, uh, municipal office, uh, to name, to name a few. Uh, they all went in around the same time, um, as, uh, a, part of the, uh, part of Walkerton and part, part of the, um, uh, transitioned un- under the health unit directive. Um, what, what, what's, uh, coming to be is that those units are starting to come to end, end of service life. We did an, we, we, we did the upgrade here at the municipal office, uh, last year, as part of the overall, um, upgrade. What we're trying to do is work through, uh, each year to replace one of those in that, uh, in, in that cycle, so, um, the, 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 the Johnstown location was, was, was selected, uh, this year.
Okay, uh, have they failed? I mean, I understand the reasoning for, for it, it's aging out and stuff, but it's a, it's water that goes through a UV, a UV light, I mean, the UV lights, I'm sure are replaced. Have we had issues with, with it beyond the bulbs, or?
So, a co- a, a, a combination, um, it, it does, um, we, we, we do. it, it does, um, we, we, we do struggle a little bit in, in stocking parts, uh, with, with the age of the unit. And some of those, um, some of those more expensive components are starting to go. And it makes some sense to get that, um, to, to, to get that replaced.
Okay. Discussion.
Nope. I don't fool around drinking water.
Don't mess with water, right?
Nope.
That's the, the easy solution.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're all on the same page when it comes to that. Yeah. All right. Don't mess with water. Uh, roadside mower.
Through the chair. I think those were, those were the remaining items. Everything else has been discussed and I have direction.
Okay. Okay. Did we discuss building rehab somewhere?
Through the chair, their building rehab was a structural wall repair, the oil and grit separator and the holding tank.
Oh, that's all three added together for a line item of one fifty. Okay. Good. Okay. Yeah. So we haven't done, we reviewed everything. We've said, keep everything in, and now we find ourselves uh, in a very difficult position. So, so I think the nodding of heads that I'll need around the table is that we send staff back with um, the direction that we find a way to fund this. I mean, realistically, uh, it's been a nodding of heads. Nobody's willing to.
And we're down, Mr. Mayor, if I may say, I think we're down to one point one.
Just shy. Yes.
Yeah, one point one. So, oh, sorry. We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. So one point one. So we need some options, uh, and I'm going to leave it for staff to, uh, to come up with those. I think the direction that I'd like to give is just to come up with some options. Um, maybe obviously more than one, you know, like several different options or combinations of options for, for funding of one point one. And if we choose to chop it, we will have to go back at it again.
Uh, I'd like to go with this budget tonight and just have staff come up with some different options of how we're going to pay for this.
Think that's what I just asked for.
Okay, but I want to go, I don't want to chop anymore. Want, what we discussed right now.
Yeah, okay. You can have that discussion when we, when it comes back though. Okay. Nodding heads. Good. Joe? Good. Good. All right. So counseling requires a notice of motion. Does anybody have an inquiry or notice of motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's just an inquiry, uh, craft hockey. Uh, it's out again. I got an email. I was talking to, where is Wendy? Wendy not here? Oh, there's Wendy. I was discussing with Wendy. I don't know if Wendy went this, went this with, uh, talked to the CIO about it, but, uh, yeah, it gives us donations that we could maybe run again with the, uh, Spencival Arena. So I just want to know if I could have council's support that we get involved, start taking pictures of the arena. See if we can't, uh, uh, North Grevo, uh, had discussions with, with, with them. They're interested in maybe helping, uh, to participate on this too. So I just need, what I'm asking for is the support that we get involved and get behind this and Craft Hockeyville, yes.
Yeah, it's a no brainer. Yeah.
So I just, we just want, like Wendy said, I should bring it up, make sure we get our council support. So.
Yeah, but anything that goes towards supporting our, especially that building and renovations to it, hundred percent.
Mike, she, she informed you, right? Because you're off. Good. You're all in.
Okay. Um, further notices of motion or, yeah, counselor.
I just thought it'd be good for a reminder for anyone that's watching that, uh, Edgbird Council, uh, Edgbird Township is still the Food Cup Challenge reigning champions.
Uh, Joe or, um, Wadi, anything? No. Uh, Chris, no. All right. So I do have an, uh, um, an inquiry, I think, and, and it's, um, I got, uh, certainly got contacted this week. Uh, by a couple of businesses, uh, about their, uh, displeasure of, um, moving over to the blue box, um, uh, issue. So I, I have not watched the video. I don't, and I do not remember the discussion, but and I'm not trying to re debate it. Um, my inquiry is, is, has staff heard from any businesses about, um, the requirement that it will go to, to a business pays for recycling? Um, and have they indicated, uh, if there are, uh, you know, are they going to continue recycling? Are they going to put the recycle in the garbage?
Uh, through the chair, we will take that away and, uh, prepare a report for the next committee meeting.
All right. And does any member have a re, or sorry, was everyone done with inquiries and no motion? Sorry. Good. Uh, member reports. Anyone have a member report to do? You all should have a little one. Anyone?
I give mine.
Joe?
Port.
I'm good. Thank you.
Uh, I really enjoyed the sessions we had with the ministers, uh, when we were away on the weekend at Roma, so I think we did a good job for the citizens of the township.
Yep. Chris, anything?
No, I don't.
No, I, I'll do real, really quick, um, uh, member report, you know, I certainly sat in on, uh, I think it was five. Uh, United Counties delegations led to United Counties delegations, one on energy and, um, the other one was on, um, uh, the value of, uh, community paramedicine, um, which, yeah, they're fantastic to, to lead, certainly, um, well discussed. We got a lot of help actually from Chief Nolan from, uh, Renfrew in the presentation that I made on community paramedicine and, and the support to it and how valuable that is diverting, uh, people away from the ER, helping elderly stay at home and, um, uh, uh, helping folks that don't have a doctor. I mean, ultimately it, it certainly, I think they said it saved something like just in our area seven hundred, but with their VTAC model, I think it was twelve thousand, um, visits averted. So that was one of the delegations. The three that we did, uh, deputy mayor spoke to MECP already, um, and, uh, I think energy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Energy already, and we certainly had one, uh, another one with, uh, Ministry of, of Infrastructure, uh, that, that certainly wasn't um, as well received as we, as we hoped to regarding the land bank and, um, but we still, uh, continue to, you know, treasure path. A path forward. And I think I'll, I'll leave it, uh, at that. And, and ultimately, yeah, I think the, um, the Roma conference again was, was money well spent. It was, uh, valuable in, in learning and, um, and frustrations, I guess, as well. So, uh, with that, we'll move to QP. I don't see anybody for QP. Nobody online. See shaking of heads. Then we have to move into closed session and somebody has moving into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Dillabah. Uh, that committee proceeds into closed session at eight twenty six PM in order to address a matter pertaining to A, section, section two thirty nine, two B, a proposed or pending acquisition, uh, or disposition, disposition of land by the municipality or local board specifically approved minutes of closed session dated September ninth, twenty twenty four. And B, section two thirty nine, two C, a proposed or pending acquisition of land by the municipality or local board specifically potential land acquisition business case.
Okay, moved and seconded. And then I will call the question to proceed into closed session. All in favor? Good. So we're in closed session and I will call for a five minute, uh, recess to clear chambers. Maybe ten, maybe ten. Oh.
Thank you.
Get to finish my pizza dough. Get off me.